So I'd like to, I'd like to begin and call the meeting of the U-46 School District to order. As we start the meeting, I'd like to go around and have everyone introduce themselves and maybe start with Bob. Could you start us off?
Sure. My name's Bob Travers. I'm the Director for Center for Technology Essex.
Rob Reardon, Principal Essex High School.
Judith de Nova, Superintendent.
I'm Brian Donahue, a representative from Essex Junction and Chair of the School Board.
Erin Knox from Essex Junction, Member of the School Board.
I'm Liz Supin from Essex Town, School Board Member.
And I'm Kathy Princeton from Essex Town, a new School Board Member.
Welcome Kathy.
Welcome Kathy. Kathy's joining us for her first meeting. First meeting of, it's 15-year terms.
Excellent.
Excellent. Sense of humor, I like.
But for you it'll be severer because you're doing RED Study Committee too, so you know, cut in half.
Yeah, yeah. We don't want to wear anybody down. So I will see if there's any visitors and staff to be heard at this time. No? So I will go directly into the Board reorganization. And our process here is an annual process, happens every year after our annual meeting and our vote, in which time we need to select our officers of the Board, appoint our task teams, our attorney, our newspaper of record. There's a series of things that we need to do to kind of organize and be prepared for the next year ahead. I have here on the screen, as I scroll up, pardon that, I get myself organized at one point and then unorganized at another. So we start off with the election of the Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk of the Board, and the three representatives for the CCSU. And I turn it over to Judy at this time.
So at this time I open up nominations for the U-46 Board Chair position.
I nominate Brian Donahue.
Erin Knox-Kennedy nominates Brian Donahue as their second. Liz Supin's second. Any discussion? Are you willing to take the position?
Can I have some time to think about? I'm happy to serve in that capacity.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and congratulations once again.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So at this time I would like to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair of the U-46 School Board.
I nominate Erin Knox.
Great. I would like to second that. Is there any other further nominations? Hearing none. Erin, I assume you're willing to serve if elected? Excellent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. I would like to open the floor for nominations for Clerk of the U-46 School Board at this time. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Liz Supin.
Great. There's, I second that as well. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none. Liz? Excited? You are?
Thank you so much.
We might even pitch in and get you a new pen.
Thank you so much.
I just said we might, so. So no other nominations. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations. Thank you for your serving.
Thank you.
So remaining in the reorganization is we have the CCSU Board. I'm proposing that we appoint myself, Erin, and Liz to the CCSU Board. We're allowed to have three representatives. There are three from Essex Junction, three from Westford, and three from U-46 that create the SU Board. Their primary responsibility of the Board is the hiring, firing, and supervision of the Superintendent, as well as policy development. Those are some of the key responsibilities. For policy, I'd like to ask Erin and Kathy to serve in the area of policy, so that would be working with Paul O'Brien primarily to go over policy. Leaders at Work, which is a primary sort of task force that focuses on the continuous process of evaluation and goal-setting for the Superintendent. Myself and Al will sit on that. Communications, ask for Liz and Kathy to serve in that capacity. A primary focus of that task team right now will be focusing on the RED work, the Regional Educational District Studies work and resulting work coming from that. And negotiations, we are at that stage again with all the tremendous amount of knowns that exist in our universe of public education. And I'd ask Erin and Liz to step onto that for us. CCT, the CTE Corp., which is the Development Corporation, which manages the land and the building process for CTE, for the Building Trades Group, ask Al to sit on there. And then rounding it out, we have a few special assignments of the Regional Educational Study and Communications work. Liz and myself there, as well as Kathy will be joining us. And then we have our Appreciative Inquiry Advisory Team and the Core Planning Team. And Liz, I'd ask you to continue with that. That is to finish up on June 24th and 25th with a community summit. So that will be wrapping up soon. I'll circulate this. This is also to give us a tickler of what Board meetings there are coming up, so that we know that we won't grow too missing of each other by taking a look, especially January. We get to see January quite a bit. So that is our first part of our reorganization. And our second part of our reorganization, there it is. I'd like to review these and then have a singular motion, if I could. We've talked about the appointment of the task teams. Our action in accepting this in one global motion will be just to affirm that and that that will be what we have ourselves organized as. We need to appoint legal counsel each year, and there is a recommendation of who that legal counsel should be. We need to set monthly meetings, and I'd like to discuss if we could just briefly if there's any interest by the Board to move from a 6:30 start to a 6:00 PM start. Is there interest in trying that?
For me, yes.
So why don't we try it? And we'll evaluate it as we get into doing it two or three times.
Yeah.
And see how it works. Great. So we'll have that motion, so that will be a 6:00 PM start time. I'm assuming that you've already sort of processed it and you guys are fine with that.
Works. It works for me.
You guys are?
Yes.
4:30, does that work?
You know? We can come to your place of work.
3:25. We need to authorize the Superintendent to accept and administer external grants and funds. Otherwise, we don't have the ability to accept those and to work with them. Grant authority to pay bills. We do this so that we don't hold up our vendors and run into any late fees, and then we subsequently sign the warrants. We have to establish a newspaper of record, and it has to be a daily newspaper, which leaves us with the Burlington Free Press. We authorize our clerk or our Chair to sign warrants on behalf of the Board if that becomes necessary at any time. And we will be spending some time on the conduct, Code of Conduct, in a second from the VSBA. It was included in your packet. And then we have to affirm the annual minutes of the, or the minutes of the annual meeting, and those were also included in your packet.
So everybody had those in advance?
I believe so.
We all saw these. The annual meeting. Where nine people attended that meeting.
That was commentary, I believe.
I'm sorry.
And we'll also later, we'll come back after our presentations by staff. I'd like to come back and address the annual planning day, so we don't hold people up. Are there any questions with regards to this? I'm going to jump into the Code of Conduct quickly, so that we can approve this all at once. But any questions about what we do annually as far as routine? So the Code of Conduct was in your packet. This is produced by the Vermont School Board Association, and it attempts to kind of just outline how we will work as individuals, how we will work as a group, and what we are working towards. It was in the packet. I hope you've been, had a chance to familiarize yourself with it. I think the key part here is that our role is in support of our public education and the fine institutions that we're responsible to oversee, and that we don't want to work with any personal agendas, and we don't want to try to promote our own self-interests at any time, so.
Yeah, and then we could.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept in a, where did I put it again? It's right here. The appointment of the task teams down through legal counsel, monthly meetings, authorization, establish newspaper of record, clerk, VSBA conduct, and the annual meeting minutes. I have a motion to accept those items.
So moved.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No abstentions. So that passes. Great. Thank you. I will have these, these are copies of the Code of Conduct. It'd be great before we leave tonight to just each be able to sign and provide that to the Superintendent for record-keeping of the district. And with that, we will go into the rest of our agenda. I do plan on coming back to Planning Day, but after we have our presentations.
So this has been the quickest Board reorganization that I've ever experienced in 10 years. Congratulations to you and your Board. This time it gives me great pleasure to introduce both Colleen Burner, who will be here to present and discuss proficiency-based learning and reporting, as well as Charlie, Charles Burnett, who's here to talk about personal learning plans and the work that the Essex High School's been doing with regards to the mandates that we've been required to meet by next year for PLPs. So we'll probably ask Amy Cole to come forward along with Colleen and Charlie, and why don't you all come forward and join us?
Linda and Mark.
So you're not so far away. Mark Floyd.
Linda. Luda Nandar and Mark Floyd.
Yeah.
Come on up.
May I pass out some handouts?
Absolutely.
Hi.
Hi.
Actually, I don't miss you. Or twice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For the Board's information, Mr. Floyd is our Director of School Counseling. And Linda Luda Nandar is an English teacher. Extraordinaire.
And it is always wonderful to have teachers join us to describe the work that's been undertaken, a huge body of work, and tying together some of the connected and integrated initiatives that have been happening and provide you with updates. Mr. Reardon wants, Principal Reardon wants to add anything else, but.
I would just say at the beginning, I really appreciate the work of all the curriculum content leaders and the task team leaders this year to continue the work in a seamless transition, as there's a lot in front of us in a short period of time, and we've made good progress, and it's a real collaborative effort. And I appreciate the collegiality of everybody.
And I guess I would have to look for new board members. So the Essex High School Three-Year Action Plan is quite large. It's on the website, and you might notice that this version of it really reflects a whole number of new legislative documents that we're responding to, such as the requirement for PLPs, which I'll care about, proficiency-based graduation requirements. And I'm sure most of you are aware, but that there is a teacher leadership model in place right now at the high school that's allowed our teachers to step up and have some release time to be able to do this work, and that's what Bob Reardon's referring to. Here are two of them.
So who's that first?
Charlie.
Charlie. And can you introduce yourself as far as what you teach and your extracurricular activity roles?
Sure. My name is Charlie Burnett, and I've been teaching in the Social Studies Department for, I think, the last 16 years. I teach economics and government primarily, but I've really dabbled in almost all the different courses required in elective over the years. And I teach, I coach football in the fall, and I live right here in Essex Junction with my wife and two children that, one attends ADL and one goes to Fleming. Backstory.
Charlie also teaches one of our VHS online courses, which allows us AP Economics, which allows us to have certain seats for our students in the 278 offerings that Virtual High School allows. So thanks to Charlie and a few other teachers to allow that to happen.
Okay, I guess. How's the? I can just jump in quickly. We made some copies of the slides. There is a lot of information on our slides, because I think our purpose was so that it could be a learning opportunity, and certainly are not going to read everything on there. So actually, a copy of each of the presentations is in that folder, so if there's any place you want to take notes or flag for future questions, just that's what that, that's included in the folder I passed out.
Do you want to do your intro and backstory?
Oh, sure. I'll do my intro and backstory. My name's Colleen Burner. I'm a Spanish teacher, and I actually was a CCL, Curriculum Content Leader for World Languages, for three years. And then as of this year, started, moved into a different teacher leadership role focused on proficiency-based learning and graduation requirements. I've really seen this role as being an opportunity for me to work with other teachers, sharing best practices, bringing people together, the resources and the expertise in our building. And as a teacher, I do feel like that has given me some more, I guess, I don't want to say credibility, but that colleagueship of people who are practicing, trying out new things while also learning about what's coming down the pike, so.
So you're gonna?
I'll drive for you.
You're gonna drive? I'll do the tour guide. On your left, you see. Okay, so I was tasked with the leadership role of trying to get us geared up to implement personalized learning plans for next year's incoming ninth graders, as well as students engaging in dual enrollment opportunities. So just our opening slide just kind of gives you overview of the breadth of what we're going to do here, is look quickly at what is the legislation, state requirements behind that task, what it's looked like this year in my role, in my point of view, and what we've been able to accomplish in prepping for that, and then where we think we'll go with this, and what kind of mechanisms we have and/or might need to fulfill these things down the road. The POP is part of a broad initiative coming out of Act 77 that seeks to foster flexible pathways for students as they progress through their public education. And of course, I think in some vision down the road, the POP may be, dare I say, the centerpiece of the whole thing in that that's the document or mechanism through which students will choose all kinds of different ways to satisfy the graduation requirements that school's set for them. And so it's a documentation process and an important process in that. Even though many of the component pieces of Act 77 won't be required of us just yet, the POP is the first out of the gates for some kids. And that's going to mean, you know, it may seem a little fuzzy at first, as far as what the document really does for kids, until some of the other components of Act 77 come online, and they all can kind of integrate and mesh the way I think the vision is for them to do that. If you look at the implementation schedule here that the State of Vermont has mandated, we're looking at next year, 2015, 16, every ninth grade student will have a personalized learning plan by November 30th. And after that, you know, it's a staggered release of additional kids. Now, there's also that little asterisk of, you know, students who want to engage in dual enrollment, and we've debated that one a lot, but we certainly know we've got a ninth grade population coming in, and as we identify students that want to do dual enrollment, we may have to then instigate a POP process as part of their application for that, because we won't know who those students are until they self-identify at that registration process. Once we get to year two in 2016, we will be able to review the previous year's ninth grade PLPs, as well as do new PLPs for the subsequent year's incoming ninth graders. And then it's year three that's the real interesting year, so that's going to be 2017, 2018, right there. What will then is import students who, as seventh and eighth graders, built and reviewed a POP with their sending middle school. And so for the first time, we will get kids coming to us who have a personalized learning plan that we had no part in its creation, but yet we will be charged with reviewing and adapting and updating and whatnot. And so I think what this slide points out is that this is going to be quite the evolutionary process for us here, the staggered approach, and the fact that middle schools, and of all the sending schools we have, we're going to probably see some diversity there, that, you know, one year's work on POP is going to look a little bit different than the next year's work, until we get to that like magical year of 2018, 19, where at that point, all of our kids have them, we're pretty versed with working with them, and we still will always have that sending school piece of coming in with some, some diversity there. Did you want to, do you think we should show the video, or is that, that was out there?
It's entirely up to you.
I don't.
It's three and a half minutes.
It's only three and a half minutes. It's quick. It's informative.
And I put this in here to give you a sense of there has been some conversation out in the media about this, so this is not Essex High School's idea. This is something that all of our high schools are doing and working together, and you guys have been reaching out to other high schools who've been, who've been building this as well.
And this is our neighboring district.
Is I think CDU?
Yeah.
In Education Matters Tonight, this time next year, high school could be completely different from what we know today.
Act 77, passed in 2013, means one year from now, every seventh and ninth grader in Vermont will have a personalized learning plan, or PLP, guiding them through to high school graduation four years later. Every high schooler in the state will have one. Local 44's Mike Kirkoff has the details.
Northfield Middle High School Senior Ben Marvel's personalized learning plan was creating the template for Northfield's personalized learning plan program.
For me, this has been really awesome. I mean, I love, I love helping the students.
He's developing these 21st century skills, and he's developing his post-secondary readiness plan on some of what he's learning, collaborating and communicating, the creativity he uses in this process.
The state's model for the personalized learning plan is based on what looks like a personality survey, meant to find out how each student learns, and what kind of environment they like to learn, even what they like to learn. Teachers and students use that survey to set goals and a roadmap to those goals, and for a spark that will catch in light of passion. Vermont nutted up to the individual school to figure out how to make it work.
... concept called student-driven PLPs.
For me, I want to do some type of environmental studies, so whether it's environmental engineering or environmental education or something like that, but tells a little bit about me, and those goals help me outline how I'm going to get there.
At Northfield, this is personalized learning plans in action. Twice a month during extended teacher advisory periods, students and teachers discuss a theme. Last month, it was being a strong community member. November's theme is understanding your learning style. PLPs haven't completely altered the school day at Northfield, but they could.
I think in the early years, we'll see this personalized environment kind of layered on top of the structure that exists. But over time, I expect that we'll see that current structure evolve.
Several schools are adapting their teacher advisory programs to cater to the personalized learning initiative. Champlain Valley Union in Heinsburg has been doing personalized learning for years. They have a variety of out-of-classroom credit options already. The plans required in Act 77 help CDU create a framework around their existing pathways to graduation.
It also provides an opportunity for all students to have equal access to go out and learn, to the Life Program, to Grad Challenge, Virtual High School, all the different multiple pathways.
For some students, the school day won't change at all. Others' learning plans might lead them to something completely different. The goal of all of these plans is to meet state-required proficiency standards, however is best for each student.
A student wouldn't necessarily have to do that in a math course or a science course. There may be other ways that they get engaged in the kind of learning experience that they need in order to demonstrate their proficiency against those standards.
We have to build our 21st century skill set, and we have to have a high level of post-secondary readiness for these students. We need to make sure they're critical thinkers, they're creative, they can communicate, and they can collaborate. And all of those things intersect through our personalized learning plan.
For Local 44 News, I'm Mike Kirkoff.
Now, personalized learning plans are not new. New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and other states have been using some form of them for nearly a decade. New York just passed a flexible pathways initiative in October.
Now, for a sample of the Northfield template and the Agency of Education's template, just head to our website, mychamplainvalley.com.
So two things that.
In Education Matters.
While you're getting it back, the two things that struck me watching the video was, number one, they started at Northfield High. That's where I had my first teaching job, actually, back in 1998, so a little bit of going home for me there, seeing the library and whatnot. But number two, it seemed like there was that tension back and forth throughout the video about how transformative PLPs will really be, both in the short term and the long term. And that's been the subject of much discussion for us this year, and I think you kind of hear both sides of it. I think the spirit of the education is it's seen as a tool for transformation, and there are those that are looking for it to create substantial change, but you also notice reference to the fact that both in the short run, and even some of these schools like CDU have been doing it for a while, it's perhaps not as transformative as we may think, that even as the AOE representative said, it was Tom Alderman said, probably a layered approach over existing structures to get going. And while we've debated that in our circles, I've found it to be reassuring that, you know, we have structures we know, we know that work well and serve kids well, so let's get started and get some plans going, you know, within the context of what we do well. And if along the way, it opens up opportunities for kids who may have not have been served as well to demonstrate proficiency in other ways, well, then that's great too. So I don't know, that was just kind of my big takeaway from that. What we've done this year on this slide right here, and we started back in August where we sent a team of administrators and teachers down to Castleton to a POP institute. I unfortunately was not one of those, given my fall occupations, and, but the team was great. They brought a lot of resources back, and many of them have stayed on in our, what we call our POP Working Group Committee, that meets every couple of weeks to discuss our progress towards implementing this initiative. We built that said work group, which is a recommendation of the state AOE's POP rollout. And then we spent the middle part of the year exploring other high schools and what they've done with PLPs to see what we could glean from those that have walked a little bit before us. Our big takeaways from the visits to CDU and Rutland were that, well, people hadn't walked that far, and that perhaps we weren't, we didn't get as much as we had hoped regarding PLPs specifically, but we did walk out with a host of knowledge about advisory models, broadly speaking, as well as about intervention block opportunities, particularly down at Rutland High. And that was the, that took up the bulk of our attention and focus in a quasi, can we use this to make PLPs happen, and those programs for their own sake. And so that was kind of the middle part of our year, and there's some exciting stuff, I think, kind of floating out there, waiting for various other logistics to come into play for, for us to move on those fronts. At some point this late winter, early spring, we decided those particular mechanisms were not necessary for us to do an implementation schedule for PLPs, so we didn't want to get bogged down in whether, when or whether those, those types of programs were going to happen. So we started developing our so-called roadmap. What do we got to do? What do we have in place that we think we can pull off a November 30 timeline for freshmen? And what supplemental things do we need to do to make sure that we have that happen? The critical elements, just an overview, you know, when you say POP, it doesn't necessarily mean a lot to someone, you know, that people have been hearing the abbreviation for a while, but these are the things the state expects to be in a student's personalized plan, and it's everything from the mundane student information down to the heart of it, which is students establishing goals for themselves, on the personal front, on the academic front, on the post-secondary front. And that's where we see the bulk of our work as a school is supporting those students in the goal-setting process. What does it mean to have a goal? What are good goals to set? What are action steps required to achieve a goal, et cetera, et cetera. Some of the components on the critical elements is worth pointing out, we are not really in a position to do much with right now, particularly number four, the common school goals. I think Act 77 down the road would like that to be the area where, where some of Colleen's work will come in with the proficiency-based learning requirements, where kids in theory will be able to, as you saw in the video, say, I want to learn about math, but I'm interested in the environment, and I want to do this activity outside of school, and I think I can demonstrate the math proficiencies through that, and maybe not necessarily in a geometry class or algebra class. We're not really there yet. I don't mean to speak for Colleen, but I don't, I don't see that we're there yet as a school, such that by November 30th this year, a kid's going to write that down in their POP. So for now, we see step four as a rather old-school, look, I need three credits of math, I need four credits of English, that's how I'm going to satisfy my graduation requirements. That isn't really. That isn't really the spirit of Act 77, but we got to start somewhere, so, uh, we see that's kind of where we're at. Took us a while to get over that, by the way. Uh, this is the, what we call the points of engagement. It's just thinking from that roadmap perspective of, okay, so next fall, what happens at what point and how does that address the particular requirements of the personalized learning plan? And it starts at orientation. We envision, uh, when the freshmen come in for the normal orientation, doing a piece on accessing the Naviance program that we see as being the, the holding cell, if you will, for P L P documentation. Uh, when we get to those early months of the school year, we think the existing mechanism of a weekly advisory is sufficient to facilitate students thinking about goal-setting, personal, academic, post-secondary, and maybe go through the process of creating their goals. We may have some logistical hurdles about technology access and things like that, but we at least think we can put the idea in front of students so that they then are empowered to, on their time and their own ways, access, uh, technology to be able to set their goals and whatnot. So we'd like there to be more advisory days, we'd like there to be more flex blog days, all those other programs I talked about. We're not sure that's happening, but we think there's no reason we, we can't get this pulled off our calendars with even those, those days that exist. In October, you'll also notice that there's already existing mechanisms like school counseling meetings where they go through the four-year plan. It's kind of that part four of that, of that last slide. Uh, we have parent conferences, a big part of Act 77 is to engage parents in the P L P process, so we think that that's a, an opportune time for parents to meet with their child's advisor, take a look at what's been developed for goals so far and provide some input. And then the 10th grade college visit day, it's important to note, is a proposal. Uh, that's not really a fully an existing mechanism. We've had an October day in the past where we've done like plan testing, PSAT testing, some of that's changing, but there's a proposal being floated out that we do, uh, we still continue to have a day in October where similar things happen and we think if that goes through, rather than having ninth graders at home, come on into school and we'll, we'll do whatever P L P components need to be wrapped up in front of that November 30 deadline. After that, it becomes a function of course registration, which again, for now, courses are really the way we satisfy our academic proficiencies. So those counselor meetings that happen in January already is where they can look at their roadmap through the high school and what they want to take, what they want to sign up for, for their sophomore year. In theory, what they put down for who they are and where they want to go with this thing, ought to guide what it is they sign up, you know, for, uh, for those courses. We'll get a second look with the parents after that's done in March and then we left it a little bit vague, but the end of the year is the time for that reflection piece to look back on what they've done, look at their plan and think about the future year. And again, we think we have some mechanisms in place with the release dates already set up for S P A C and Science NE C A P and so on and so forth that again, we could pull ninth graders in and do some reflective work as well as those advisory days that exist throughout the calendar year. I know that's not a lot of detail with that right there, but we went through several variations where one, there were just too detailed for anything like this. This is just a slide showing you one snapshot of the Naviance program. If you've never been in to look at it, it's not very glorious to look at this one, but there wasn't one screenshot that was certainly encapsulated the whole thing. But I just wanted to point out that Naviance seems to be the hot tool to, to take this work forward across the county. It sounds like, uh, that's what schools are, are racing to adopt as their mechanism, which has some great portability attributes to it that, you know, you think about school choice in Chittenden County, you think about kids moving district to district for a variety of reasons. It'd be awful nice if we had a pretty seamless transition of, of electronic, uh, storage. Um, it's much more efficient than I can imagine doing any kind of paper trail or filing cabinet approach would be, as well as, you know, the parent-student accessibility piece. Again, if we can't always have 25 computers in a room for them to type things up, but they can access the internet from anywhere, in the library during a study hall, what have you, then that's, I think, an important mechanism as well. One of the stumbling blocks will be, we talked about those seventh grade plans coming forward. As last I'd heard, the, the middle schools were not as excited about using Naviance as their tool for engaging in, in P L Ps and that's something we'll have to adapt to and figure out as, as we'll get a plan somehow on paper or whatever system those variety of schools use. And the ninth grade probably for us will always be a transition year of taking their format and turning it into our format.
One thing Charlie said I'd just jump in on is our, our students the last few years and parents have had real positive feedback in terms of the, the college search and college application process using Naviance. So it's a known entity in our community already in terms of being viewed very favorably. So a, another reason, as Charlie said, um, across Chittenden County, why folks are jumping on board readily. And I did hear from Westford, Marcy is, is going, just as an F Y I, today, uh, at Westford will be using Naviance for their seventh graders.
It's a beautiful tool and a chance to leverage technology for, for this process that isn't by itself necessarily technology-driven, but, uh, you can embed surveys, so you can, you know, customize surveys for kids to do like your career interest or learner profile or any of the things you want kids to go through and kind of self-assess themselves to come up with, you know, who am I as a learner and where am I going with this thing? I just think it's a fantastic way to do it. You could task kids so they can just log in, see right away, hey, I've been assigned two tasks to complete by such and such a date, you know, and I think that's, um, I think that's a great way to get this stuff accomplished. That's one of the things we struggled with this year, it's like, who's responsible? You know, who's the, who's the one person? And, and we've largely put that question aside because that just became so problematic. We just kind of have taken the approach this year that everybody's responsible on that. It's going to take all of us. It's a little bit of paradigm shift of all teachers are going to have to be watching out for kids on their load and there is going to be a role for advisors to be on top of their advisees and, and know who's filled out what and who hasn't done things yet. Of course counselors are always, you know, checking up on kids and making sure they've got things taken care of. It's really going to take all of us, I think. Uh, summing up what we've got here, we think we're in place to pull this off by November 30th. Uh, we're, we're happy that it's a staggered approach and that it's just, uh, just ninth graders and not necessarily the whole school. Though we've talked a little bit about going through the goal-setting process with everyone, since our current advisory model is a multi-grade model, it may work that we just talk about goal-setting to everyone. It's just that, it's just the freshmen that'll actually go and do something productive with it, uh, as far as P L Ps are concerned. Um, and yeah, we're, things we're not as sure about is what, some of those non-academic dates that are proposals but not hard and fast things right now. Maybe some teacher training at in-service, there's been some debate about that. I, I haven't felt like we need a lot, if any, others have felt like teachers may need a little more hand-holding with goal-setting activities and things of the sort, but we can certainly make use of in-service time. And then, you know, the coordination piece, in the perfect world, we'd have a seamless thing from seventh grade on up. I, the world's not perfect, so that's just one we're going to have as part of our work.
If you're not fair to ask, at this point, as you're developing it all, Charlie, but you also have receiving schools in the future. Those are tech centers. So has any conversation happened about that crossover?
That's a great point. No, we have not really broached that one, but that's one we should get down onto our-
Be happy to put together a task team from the tech center to, to talk about a lot of different overlaps. We just got word from the A O E that, um, V S A C has come up with a way to file share. So what we need to do as a tech center is send to all of our sending schools, 11 this year, uh, 13 next, um, in individual or individuals who would receive user IDs for the different sending schools' Naviance accounts. And we would be able to see the stu-, all of the students, um, who are shared between the two, the two institutions.
Now certainly students are going to be writing goals that they have that are going to lead them towards various pathways.
You'll come across some ninth graders who say, I want to go to pre-tech.
Yeah.
And they'll say that coming through the door.
Yeah.
Um, you'll have some kids come to the realization that they want to go to automotive. There's a lot of opportunity around, especially around the goal-writing, because I don't think a lot of students who want to go to automotive know that it's a 13th grade reading level that the text is written on. So there's, there's a lot of work, and if we can get to that knowledge at ninth grade and get them to understand, if that's, you want to go turn wrenches, you also need to read at a pretty proficient level. Let's, let's find out ways you're going to engage in that kind of reading. It would be really good. Another point I want to make is, um, your, your 12th and 11th grade students right now in your, in your advisors really would benefit from goal-writing and the use of Naviance. There are great functions of Naviance, um, cost calculators at schools and what does that mean for a particular, a particular career interest area? That's what we're doing in my house right now. And Naviance, Naviance has been a, a fantastic tool. He goes on and he looks at schools and he decides a lot of different things just based on what he can glean off the internet.
One point.
One other thing I'd share for the board members, because Charlie touched on this, it's an important point, is the dual-enrolled student piece. And this current year, we have 81 juniors and seniors that are pursuing dual enrollment. So, you know, you're basically looking at 310-ish freshmen and then throw in, you know, 80 dual-enrolled students over time. So, yeah, that, that'll be a, a good chunk of the population next year.
Does, um, we'll go around and see if we have any questions at this point? Is, um, Kath, do you have any questions?
Well, I was, I was just going to say, I, I, I work at V S A C in the outreach program and then, and quite familiar with this, with Naviance and kind of trying to help it move statewide. Um, and we work, we do a lot of work with the A O E and do a lot of work with, uh, dual enrollment. Um, so it, it, it's great because I'm watching this thinking, oh, I'm familiar, I'm familiar. Very nice. So just full disclosure, I'm, I'm working with people who are doing this work a, as well in a different arena, so that's nice.
Great. You're already a veteran.
Maybe, yeah, it may be very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Great resource.
It's excellent. Liz?
Yeah, no, thank you for your work. It's, it's, um, it's really nice to see how hard you've been working at it and we appreciate it. I totally agree.
Great. Um, so I don't think we have a November board meeting. Um, I think that's one of our, our engagement months. Um, so the next time, the, the closest the board will be meeting is in October before the 30th. Um, so it might be good to get a, a temperature read in October to sort of see how the advisory's been doing and how we're going. Um, as we reach the end of the year, is there, I mean, the 30th becomes real easy to be like measured, you know? We have 411 P L Ps, we have 411 kids, done. But like at the end of the year, what do you ima-, what's your vision of like, what's the done at the end of the year? Then is it course registration that ties in? Is it updating? What's that? I mean, what's the done at the end of the year?
I think it's a fantastic question. It's one our, our work group has struggled with all year long and I, and I don't know that my answer is the answer, but I'll give you, I think my answer is, I don't think it's ever really done. I think there's the, uh, the 30th deadline because they got to have something that creates that sort of, hey, look, everybody, this is a requirement. We got to have something in place, but, uh, the P L P's a process as much as it is a product. And, uh, when you look at the reflection piece, you know, that's not going to be done by November 30th, but that's an important piece of P L Ps. Uh, you look at the, that part four on, um, academic goal-setting, whether we're thinking from a proficiency-based thing, if we're ready to go with that, or we're going with just sort of Carnegie units and credits. Well, we don't really do that credit thing until January and I don't think the state expects everybody to accelerate that up to November. I think that's what they mean by that November 30th deadline. So even if we went with the end of the year, by the time we've gone through all the different phases, is that done? Well, not really because we're going to come back around the horn and the mandate is to review them every year and, and for good reason, because boy, a 14-year-old establishing post-secondary goals only, only holds so much weight.
This isn't in granite? They don't, they're inflexible?
We're not even sure that their course registration in February matches their interest when they get to September, so, uh, kids drill a remarkable amount in short amounts of time, so.
So, um, just two other quick ones is, so will November 30th be sort of the magic witching hour each year as a new class comes in? So it's ninth graders next year, will the, the next class that has to get on it, if, I'm trying to figure out the, the staging.
Yeah, the state keeps throwing the number down there as that, as being a magic date and I think it certainly will for the first few years when you're talking brand-new processes for kids who've never done this before. Uh, we are going to reach a year where every kid will have been through this already. Of course, it'll be an eighth grade reviewed version from a seventh grade creation. Uh, we at the minimum will have to do whatever, um, transfer needs to take place based on the systems, you know, the Naviance versus some other systems. So there's that minimum of that work that has to be accomplished. And I suspect of the review part of it, you know, reviewing of your personal goals, reviewing, uh, your academic goals, that, that part of that probably will always remain at November 30th sort of. Let's build mechanisms to make sure that's done by then.
Your, your calendar, the way you laid it out, it has a lot of nice, um, coincidences that happen and, and things that happen in the same time period of, uh, parent-teacher conferences and so forth. Um, and I guess the last one is, was there any thought about going to grade-level advisories?
Yeah.
Opposed to the way that works right now?
Perfect that you bring it up. It's related to your last question too. I, I would be remiss not to offer that. Some of the work group have offered that. We should not necessarily feel like we have to do all of the components every single year with kids and that there are certain parts of these tasks that lend themselves to certain ages better than others. We already have some existing mechanisms, say like for sophomores doing, uh, career inventory work and maybe it's better to ask a kid at that age where they think this is heading and, I don't know, we, we've, we, we don't really get anywhere when we engage in those discussions, you know? We certainly can change our advisory model. There are plenty of reasons to go to a single-age-based approach that, that would lend itself better to a staggered over four-years look at this. At the same time, we have an existing model and with all the change that's going on, are, are we ready to change other elements? And, and is it bad for a kid to have looked at every year? Hey, when I was a freshman, I thought I wanted to be a fireman. By the time I was a sophomore, I wanted to do this and then sort of watch themselves evolve, I guess. No, no perfect answer really, but I don't know. It's the right questions for sure.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Really helpful, really helpful to, to see how it's unfolding.
So, um, I'm going to start, I've actually been involved with Charlie's work group and it's been really great to see that intersection between proficiencies, especially part four of the P L Ps. Um, and I think speaking to that implementation process and your question about the end of the year, 2016 freshman fall, um, we imagine there would be something more in that number four around, um, common school goals. So that's just a little segue, um, about the intersections. Again, I haven't been able to contribute a lot around the proficiency part of the P L P, but being involved in those conversations, I think, keeps everything connected. Um, so the way I think I mentioned earlier, I structured this PowerPoint to really be an opportunity to go back and look at a lot of different notes about this, what we've done and where we're headed. So forgive me for the amount of co-, of content on each slide, but I do want to start with the overview of the legislation and just connecting the E Q, the ed quality standards the way Charlie did, um, talking about how we've approached our process for talking about proficiency-based learning and graduation requirements at the high school, talk about what we've done so far, where we're headed, and then leave with some resources, um, for anyone who's interested in learning more about this and al- also learning along with our faculty. Um, I've provided some of the resources that we've been looking at as an entire faculty as well, so board can, can see that. Um, I, I bolded a part of the ed quality standards here around the graduation requirements in that document. And what we've been focusing most on is the bottom, the second paragraph that says, when used, well, first of all, local graduation policy must define proficiency-based graduation requirements based on standards adopted. When used, credits must specify the proficiencies demonstrated in order to obtain a credit. It should not be based on time spent in learning. So the idea that whatever we're doing with our credits at this school in this transition time, we need to make sure that we're defining those credits based on, by the time you're done with this course, these are the proficiencies that you'll need to demonstrate. And as you saw in the video, um, that would also be the kind of thing that could get transferred pretty easily where you say, okay, in this course, for this credit, here are the proficiencies. If you can demonstrate and propose a way to do that in an alternative method, it's very clear what the expectations are. It's a lot of work to get there for all of our courses, and I hope by the end of this, you can see some of the pro- the steps that we're taking to get there. The other thing I just wanted to point out before I talk more about this is, I put a really pretty colored copy in your folders, just to break up the black and white. Um, I keep this, this handout right at the top of my binder. Um, it's a great resource from, um, the Great Schools Partnership, which is a place where we have gone for many of our resources. The New England Secondary School Consortium is part of the Great Schools Partnership, League of Innovative Schools, some of those words, forgive me if you know them, but just to keep that language alive. This talks about the different roles and responsibilities and the flow of the work. So, there are places on this chart where school board is mentioned, so I think that's a great thing to have eye on in terms of what are our different roles in this transition time. I have been keeping this as my series of steps and the different constituencies that I would like to, to touch base with throughout the process, um, and the different audiences that may need a different message or different learning. So, anyway, that's in there, I think it's a really nice foundational piece. Do you wanna do the video?
I'm wondering if you wanna hold off and you go through your presentation, and then we can see if they have access to it. But I did wanna show you that they highlighted some high schools who have some history of doing this already.
And that brings another great point, I think my approach, much like what Charlie mentioned, is, and I appreciate, um, Kathy, your, your input about being, um, working for VSAC and the idea that we're all working through this together. We don't all need to be reinventing the way we're doing it. We all have to keep in mind what our particular communities and students need, which may be different among the different schools in Vermont. And yet, we should be able to share resources, best practices, ideas, mechanisms. Um, so that's been our approach too in harnessing the expertise in our building and throughout the state, as you'll see in that video.
Before you go much further, I realized back here on this, it, we didn't include the timeline. Can you just go over sort of what our expected timeline is? It, it's not quite as quickly as the LPs.
So, the basic timeline is that by the incoming freshman class, or the freshman class incoming fall of twenty sixteen, otherwise known as the graduating class of twenty twenty, needs to have proficiency-based graduation requirements, technically as a part of their experience. In order to do this work well, I also see that implementation as a process similar to the PLP process, where it will not be one hundred percent change for that first class. But there will be very concrete, clear steps that are changes from what the current system is in order to show that we're on the road to getting there. But for us to make this change with integrity and so that the community also supports it, students understand it, teachers are truly making changes in their best practices that reflect proficiency, I do believe that it needs to be a process that is slow and one that has layers of implementation. Is that, does that answer that question?
Yeah, so our current seventh-grade students will experience something slightly different. And Colin, you don't have it all worked out, but Colin's gonna walk, walk us through what some of those changes may look like.
Yeah. And Rob, also interrupt me if you're, have something else that you wanna jump in with.
I will interject when I feel the need.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so like I mentioned before with that colored document, we've been working with, um, New Eng- New England Secondary School Consortium, both with having consultants in our school as well as sending a large mass of teachers to the New England Secondary School Consortium Conference for multiple years. Um, yesterday at our faculty meeting, we had a stand-up of all people, all faculty who have had some sort of professional development around proficiency base this year, and it was a critical mass. So, it feels like that, um, the learning is growing and the sharing. So, the League of Innovative Schools, Rob knows a little bit more about that, but we are part of the League of Innovative Schools, especially around, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, but beginning with the pathways, AVPA, STEM, that was part of our, our hook into the league.
Yep. The secondary schools were established with two main objectives, establishing multiple flexible pathways for students and proficiency-based learning. And the consortium was formed in two thousand and ten, and we've actually presented twice. Essex High School's had a team present twice on flexible, multiple pathways. And so, the ability to meet with schools from throughout New England who are in different stages of work on those two main themes has been very helpful and productive and, and critical mass, that would be over twenty-five teachers.
Yeah. And that's not counting teachers who didn't stand up because they've gone in other years.
Correct.
So, um, the leadership model this year has given me the opportunity to really focus in on how to help facilitate the learning among our faculty around proficiency base. I'm also working with colleagues in the Spanish, um, content, in the world language content area to work on a proficiency-based Spanish curriculum, which we have implemented this year with limitations because of our whole-school mechanisms not yet having been altered in a way that would allow us to really do our grading practices to reflect proficiencies, but in our best practices in our teaching. We've started to, um, come up with some interesting units of study and showing some models of how people can actually be using this. So, I say, I mention that in the sense of teacher leadership, the importance of that, that we're practicing and talking about it and sharing. So, the Great Schools Partnership, um, is working also with the Agency of Education right now on what this model you see up here, we have been using the pyramid from Great Schools Partnership as our foundation as to how we're going to implement proficiency base. And I would say, if, at the top of the pyramid, that's what we would consider, I would say the first two sections, the top of the pyramid cross-curricular, and then the second layer, content area graduation standards. Those would be the things that Charlie mentioned in that level four. The things that we're saying to graduate here, these, these proficiencies that you need to demonstrate. The top of the pyramid, the cross-curriculars, we began at the beginning of the year, looking at, um, with the teacher leadership team. And I would argue also that at the bottom of the pyramid, a smaller group of PDI folks, um, working on an independent study course for credit, was really working about the unit design. So, trying to approach this from both the top and the classroom level, hoping that we can infiltrate many different layers and start learning as we go. The next slide shows, oh, yeah.
Before you go though, I just wonder, could you give an example of what a proficiency is?
Yes, I'm gonna get there.
Okay, sorry.
So, if, so, yeah, I was going to go into that, but I remembered that my slides, um, demonstrate that a little bit better. A lot to read and I'm not going to read it, but these are the action steps that I have laid out, um, the broad strokes for the board to see. And what I'm gonna do now is just take each one of those action steps and break it down and relate it to that pyramid, so that we can think about what each of these layers of proficiency looks like and also think about where they fit within what I see as our action steps. So, the blue highlights the top of the pyramid in this first, in this slide with action step, step one. Part of the Ed Quality Standards, one of the eight curriculum areas is what's called transferable skills. Those transferable skills are on the right. Clear and effective communication, self-direction, creative and practical problem-solving, responsible involved citizenship, informed and integrative thinking. We have done a lot of research, and in fact, those five would wa- would be what we as Essex High School would propose to be the top of the pyramid in terms of our cross-curricular graduation proficiencies. All students in our school, by the time they graduate, need to show proficiency of these five areas. They, each of those has a set of performance indicators which gives better clarity around what it means to be a clear and effective communicator. And this work, we've taken a bit of a break on because the state is actually creating assessments, scoring criteria, and a lot of other tools, that the hope is that this top of the pyramid would be the cross-curricular at Essex High School and ideally throughout the state of Vermont. Again, for that, all different, you, flexibility for students. Keep going, I'm gonna keep talking about that with this particularly. Um, so when the, the curriculum content leaders sat and talked about this top of the pyramid and looked at Maine's models, some other models from New Hampshire that the Great Schools Partnership recommends, over and over, we came up with what the Agency of Education has used as their transferable skills, so they're common throughout New England. Um, so we have proposed that we use those formally, we haven't done much with how that's going to look, um, implementation-wise, but that is on the table and among the teacher leaders. What I've been doing also right now is working with the Agency of Education and Great Schools Partnership on those full-day pull-out sessions, developing the performance assessments related to those different transferable skills and the scoring criteria. So, I've been involved in those conversations and eventually will help to implement that at Essex High School. If we wanna use what the state has created, or if we decide we wanna do something similar, but not exactly the same. So, that's where we are at the top of the pyramid. The second area, so this, so now going around fall of this year, we as curriculum content leaders with my, um, I guess, my facilitation, looked at each of our content areas and what matters most by taking a look at our national standards, Common Course Tate standards, and the Next Gen Science standards, and talking about if we had to boil that down into five to eight statements that we need to say as a graduate of Essex High School, you need to demonstrate proficiency in social studies in these five to eight ways. Uh, what would those be for your content area? Rich conversation in content areas about that. Um, the difference between where are the overlaps among what we teach and our particular courses? What are those themes that matter most? I don't have the list of the draft of those statements, and I wanna just say that they are messy right now because of the investment that people have in coming up with five to eight statements that truly demonstrate what we believe should be the graduation proficiency. So, that has been, um, a tricky one, and quite honestly, the state has samples. They've made it very clear that they're samples and that they are not necessarily the end-all, be-all. In fact, they are expecting schools to tighten those up for individual schools. Um, so next year, I believe we'll pr- continue to work with that, especially as we evolve with, um, all of our curriculum maps in hand. And I'll talk a little bit more about, eh, curriculum maps. This is where I, the third level of the pyramid, what is called the performance indicators. This is where I see the, the work being the most powerful for students in this school. This is where I have started to move, um, us to having conversations and also I envision as our work primarily next year for all faculty. So, basically, by the end of this year, part of our supervision and evaluation has been to map all of our courses in this school. We learned, we were trained in mapping last year, everyone had to complete a curriculum map for one course. By the end of this year, all courses will be mapped. So, using those maps, those maps will help us identify what matters most in our courses and dig into our course proficiencies. Those course proficiencies should align with what we are saying, uh, those proficiencies are the indicators of those graduation standards for our content areas. So, how do we identify those course proficiencies? And our work this year, um, towards the end of this year, has to, ha- is to begin to separate out what we're calling learning habits from our grades. And thinking about if we separate those, what is left in our grade books? Because ideally, what's left would be the summative assessments that are asking kids to demonstrate all the skills, the knowledge, and the understanding of our courses. If what's left does not demonstrate that, then we have some thinking and work to do around assessment design. But the maps are gonna be an, a fantastic tool for this work, along with the idea of removing some of these behaviors. That's going to, again, be a really slow process, and I can speak to more specifics about that. But I think we have an approach that is cautious, but also really powerful for getting teachers to think about, um, how to align their assessments with their course proficiencies in order to demonstrate graduation standards. Um, so, um, I just lost you, one second, no, you're good, so keep going to the learning objectives. I would say this one I'll, I'll just mention briefly, that the learning objectives is the daily work. What are we doing to get those kids to the summative assessment? So, if I know what that summative assessment is that is aligned with the proficiencies for my course, then my daily lessons are going to be reflecting all the steps that need to be taken in order to get there. The PDI group has been working on that part, and I believe we have a critical mass of teachers who have been doing some experimenting, including Linda, who's here tonight, some really great unit design around proficiencies and summative assessments, and little by little, I hope that we can start building a toolbox with more examples. Um, go ahead, thank you. Um, this is now talking about when I, I have for action step number five, adapting our grading procedures to separate learning habits from academic achievement of course proficiencies and report the two separately. So, it doesn't mean that those learning habits are just suddenly not going to matter, but rather they'll matter even more and paint a clearer picture of the connection between academic achievement and learning habits. And also, help us identify maybe gaps in kids' learning, also where kids are maybe misplaced. Is that, is that the right word? They're, they're not placed correctly if they are achieving with lo- la, um, learning habits that aren't really, they're not working hard on their learning habits, but they're achieving academically. Does that mean that we have to look at that student and understand what's happening a little bit better? So, instead of a seventy-four, that seventy-four would become perhaps a different number, and the clarity around the habits would also be defined. So, around that work, we did have, um, a presenter from Great Schools Partnership here. We had Essex High School faculty, um, and admin attend the ASCD, which I don't even know what it stands for, but.
Association of Supervision Curriculum Development.
Okay, so ASCD in Houston and attended a two-day workshop with Thomas Guske, and he, his, um, entire workshop was the foundational idea of, when you report learning habits separately from academic achievement, it paves the way to proficiency-based learning, best practices for kids, and reporting with clarity around what kids know and are able to do. Um, so, that we actually launched yesterday at a faculty meeting with some really great discussion for full faculty around what would that look like in our courses. We're going to, we have a, a plan for our faculty meetings this spring and in service in, um, June to talk more specifically about what this could look like for next year. And finally, action step, step six. This is where we're kee- we're continuing that work around what are our proficiencies in our courses and how do we go a little bit deeper and deeper each year with our grading practices and reporting mechanisms? Um, because in order for us to truly achieve a proficiency-based system, the learning part is essential, and it is not just a matter of changing the report card. We have to be making, we have to be sure that our practices are understood among our teachers, our kids, our community, and that the reporting then is a reflection of that understanding. So, I think, can you go one more slide? Cause I'm, um, this is the summary, the work in progress. It's a work in progress, and I feel like, um, you know, collaborating with Amy, we've talked a lot about our public implementation and our in-house, internal implementation, knowing that we need to do a lot of capacity building within the high school around how teachers can feel confident speaking to their community about this before it's something that is absolutely public. So, that balance and looking at those two, um, in a parallel way and seeing where the steps are the same and which one, which steps need to come out in front of the other, uh, um, whether it's public or internal. And then, knowing that sooner than later, for this to happen, any changes for twenty sixteen, this board would need to be approving those changes. And so, we have, um, an eye on the fall for this board to be looking at a proposal so that the following year, it can actually be implemented.
I'd just like to jump in and say that I'd like to point out to the board that they're continued willing to invest travel for staff to get smarter, whether it's regional New England or national, like a group went to Houston, is so, so important and should not be underestimated, so I just wanna make that point.
A lot of gratitude around that as well, I could see, I could feel the confidence in the room yesterday as people stood up, looked around the room, um, were scattered among tables. So, there's a, there's definitely, we, we use the analogy of the blob as growing, that we are growing this critical mass of teachers who can, who understand and can actually be starting to implement and practice some of these different things. And just before the questions, I did include an article by Thomas Guske, um, in the folder. It's also linked on the PowerPoint, it's a great article that demonstrates some, what I could imagine an Essex High School report card looking like down the road. Um, something that honors our school, our community, um, and our, and also reflects some of the changes around proficiencies and learning habits that we hope to implement. So, I, I would, I highly recommend that article. Um, and I also included just, um, a brief document about the ten principles of proficiency base.
Um and I also included just um a brief document about the ten principles of proficiency-based. Um learning and reporting from the Great Schools Partnership, so.
Yeah.
I guess I'd like to add that um, behind the screen.
I know, I keep seeing Rob halfway.
You know, I often have to remind myself, um, the system that that high schools currently function under with Carnegie units. In the case of this, high school's twenty-four Carnegie units, English, math, social studies, has been in place since eighteen seventy-three. Our state and several other states have required that we stop counting numbers and that we actually talk about what kids are learning within that. And I think the approach that Colleen has described, while you might not have gotten all the detail. In large part, it's because we're really trying to problem solve this one carefully. This is a huge paradigm shift. If you think of every taxpayer, every parent, every child, every teacher has experienced. A completely different paradigm. We're not gonna s- kinda jump to something wonky, um and wanna assure you of that. We're trying to be really thoughtful. Um what comes up at almost every meeting I attend is whatever we come up with should. Ensure that the rigor is the same or higher as a result of this, not lessened in any way. Um and so that's why you're not necessarily seeing a proposed report card in front of you, yet there's just a lot of to-. You know, we have had probably two years of conversation with the curriculum content leaders alone. And two to three years of working with the teachers around identifying concepts, content and skills in classrooms. Um so when we do come forward, I think with proposal, we've talked a lot about it being a tiered approach to be thoughtful in that way.
So two things, just to reiterate, Colleen mentioned this at the beginning. The whole premise here is learning is the constant time the variable. It's not a matter of sitting in a chair. Five times every two weeks for a semester and you're automatically gonna be proficient. That's one thing. And another example I could give to the board is one of our longstanding, very successful. Programs for junior girls, our Women in Science program currently, girls selected for that program. Um are involved from October to April every year with a professional mentor. In Chitting County and they meet at least once a week. So right now and for the past twenty years, they don't receive any credit. But they certainly would be able to identify. Defined and agreed upon proficiencies with the work. So that they could check off those essential learnings and understandings. So right now, oh, believe me, they're learning. But we're just not giving them credit cause they're not sitting in a seat in Essex. So that's a, that that's kind of where we're going, giving a current example. So there are definitely skills uh being learned, but it's gonna be a whole paradigm shift as we move forward. So. It's exciting and the con- the conversation we had yesterday. At the faculty meeting uh was exciting in the sense that, you know, we really had a table-by-table conversation on. On grading and taking out some of the more common behaviors that are intertwined with assessing academic competencies. And what would it look like taking those out, like homework completion, participation and attendance? As just three of the discussion points. Very rich.
And I'll just add to Amy's point, the group that was in Houston, we spent hours. We would get back from the conference and spent, we spent the next seven hours talking about. Which of the learning habits make the most sense? What is going to lead us to a deeper understanding of proficiencies? And also clearly be be consistent throughout our entire school. And we went back and forth and back and forth. So on paper, it may look like. Three very basic habits. There's actually a profound opportunity there um to think about how we're going to transform this. But it takes a lot of conversation around the table, for sure.
A comment and a question.
Yes.
The comment is, uh if you go back to the definition, definition in the second paragraph of the legislation. I think that bolded statement is. Um happening in very many ways at Essex High School in excellent courses. If you, if you, if you read that definition, my experience is as a parent is that the best classes do that. It's not the time that the teacher's paying attention to. It's what, what can I have these students learn? And it's clearly defined and those are the most successful experiences that my kids have had. So I think that the difficulty is in the, in the systemization of that idea. And how the overlapping happens in an organization. But I think this happens every day at this school.
Yes.
Um in a lot of real ways. So that's my comment. Um, the question is, can you give me an example of one of those three learning habits that took nine of our seven hours to come through?
Yes. So we decided on three. And we actually developed compliance rubrics because. The whole idea that if you were going to assess it, you need to teach it. And you need to give kids multiple opportunities to learn it and demonstrate it. So we thought the best way, again systematically, all throughout the entire school consistently. The three habits we came up with are attendance. Yes, we have Power School, but the idea being that what is the connection between? Your particip- your attendance in class and your academic achievement. Let's see it. Let's, let's tease it out. Is there a connection there? Is there a story to tell? Um participation and homework completion. So not quality of homework, not necessarily what you learned from it, but whether or not you did it. And part of the reason with those three were because of the compliance concept. And also because those are the ones we started looking through teacher grade books. Were the categories we most often saw. So those are things teachers are already including, but our system right now. Has us lump it all together into one number, gets reported home, doesn't tell the story of what's happening as clearly as it could. And so therefore, um that's what we came up with and that's what we proposed to faculty yesterday. We have a very basic compliance rubric and also some ideas for how that could look on. A current Essex High School report card. Um to report the number for academic achievement alongside some symbols around those three habits. And whether you do them consistently, sometimes or rarely. And what that's going to take is how mu- how much of a leap can we take with our community and saying, let's put this in front of them? Starting in the fall. And I would argue that with that leap, again, are we ready? Um as an entire school to do that in a way that speaks with integrity in all courses, all teachers? So.
So on that note. I would add um that this is one of those moments when I so desire uh for there to be a. One single K twelve, pre-K twelve system would be having this conversation pre-K through twelve. Because a lot of work has been going on at the K eight level. In fact, this year was the first year of implementation of standards-based reporting at both of our middle levels. Uh our K through five have been reporting on standards-based learning for the past. Eight years now. Um and they have separated out some of the compliance standards. So. As it may be new at the high school level to begin this giant leap. Parents and students have been making those changes systemically throughout the system. I wouldn't say it's totally gelled everywhere. Um I think it's the strongest at our K five right now. How we agree, but just because of the time that's been spent. Um, I think that, and we have a parent here who could speak to that. Um and then at the middle level, I think um where the struggle came in this year. Was with the tool. There wasn't a tool to help communicate uh the standards-based reporting. And we're working on trying to resolve that. We have meetings about um what that could look like. And again, we're trying to align with Essex Town schools at, at the same time. So we're not in this perilous situation where we would choose a different system. Um but there's a foundation, I guess is the word I'm looking for. To say this is a growing movement. It's been growing over time. Um and to think of those seventh graders coming up. Um they'll have experienced the standards-based um learning. At both ADL, Westford and Essex Town Middle School. So. Um they'll come in with some knowledge of that and really there hasn't been that kind of. We haven't received those students yet that have had that kind of foundation, but. It will be just like PLP is very evolutionary in nature and it'll be scaffold as students come through.
And and the other thing I would add is I think we, we need to be uh very thoughtful, careful. And planful in our communication to our parents. And community members because what the high school faces that the other levels don't is the exiting of students to college and career. And that certainly can be done, but I think we have to be very careful so that we don't shock and awe. An unsuccessful, an unsuccessful suspecting uh group of parents who have been. Uh experiencing perhaps with older siblings, a more traditional setting. And are very concerned about the college process and of course, Mark is our expert there. So it certainly can be in terms of, in terms of knowing how. School profile, how important that is in communication to college and and his work. Yeah. So, but but I do think is important and Colleen touched on it in terms of a transition. So. In terms of a report card mechanism, I don't wanna go on and on, so I won't. But, but there, there are models where there's a hybrid or a transition model for a high school to use. So it's not a. Complete three sixty, what's going on type of approach where you can't have proficiencies. And they would equate a familiar A, B, C. Reporting mechanism, a parallel mechanism as well in a transition. I, I could imagine. I'm trying to imagine questions you might have and that's, that's one of.
Definitely see where.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it's.
I think your point, Bob, about kind of the systematization.
Yes, yeah.
Um, cause I'm kind of like, I'm an advocate of kind of, I'd love to see. Just like we'd love to see K through twelve, have kind of this harmonious system. I'd love to see that across the country. Um, so I mean, I think this is like amazing. Um, and you definitely need to be the spokesperson. But I do, I, I do think that um, you know, kind of what you said at the end about, you know, are we ready? I mean, I, it, it doesn't sound like we really are yet.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, the amount of work is quite, you know, staggering. And I, I mean, I think it's so um amazing to be able to break out of. Just that sort of alphabet world of, you know, A, B, you know, um. But yet I can also understand where, once again, kind of having to have something systematized. There does have to be some sort of way to have the, the playing field make some sense.
Right.
On a state or national level. So, you know, when Cornell looks at a student. You know, a PLP from here, does it totally not equip, you know?
Right.
Or proficiency-based learning, does it totally, are these like two different total worlds, you know? So I, cause I think for parents, that will be a really hard thing for them to kinda. Wrap their brain around. And I, and speaking as some, my son is in, he's at Summit and he's in second grade. And we've been getting the new report cards and, you know, I mean, we're older parents, so we were kinda like, what?
Aaron, Aaron, I think that's an incredibly important point because it is something that, that we struggle with.
Yeah.
And, and know that as an educator, when I received my sixth page, when I said, okay, is he failing? It's a really hard thing to shift to and I'll tell you, it's really hard for teachers as well. We sit and we look at that report card and some teachers say. We should have more information for parents because that standard doesn't say enough. And then another says, oh my gosh, that's too much information for parents. We really need to kinda bring it up here. It's been really hard. I think it's worth restating what Rob said earlier to be clear, for the record. We're not looking at the high school that's building a standards-based report card in one, in a way that you're experiencing at the elementary level. Because the context is very different.
Yes.
You can move from grade seven to eight not showing proficiency. Or I should say not yet meeting a standard, or developing, I should say, is the term that they're using. You can't leave our high school without meeting a proficiency. So it's a very different environment. So I think what Colleen's laid out is a way for us to change our practices in the classroom to more accurately reflect proficiencies.
Yep.
And to build in more proficiency reporting, but I don't think we're envisioning a world where it's gonna look like what you're experiencing in, at Summit.
And I think the word rigor that we used, because I do also think, just talking from some of my friends and other parents, you know, I do think that that's gonna be a big thing. The parents are gonna wanna understand is what is the rigor component of this? So we love the flexibility. We love the individuality of it. Um but we're also gonna wanna understand where is the rigor, you know? Um but like I, I mean, I look at my son, I just can't believe how much they do in school. I mean, it, it's kind of. It really, I just think of when I was in second grade, it's a lot different.
Right.
You know, so I see a lot of rigor. Um but luckily, we have great teachers too where, you know, if you, hey, it's like doing physics. But it's like, you know. It's like you go, you go.
That's the point.
Cause we have such great teachers though, you know, we go to the, we can go to the teachers and, and, and they, they explain and they can.
Right. And that was the point of bringing up the standard space, um grading at the K five le- level is that. Parents are developing an understanding as well as students of what those standards are. And what, and where the rigor is.
Teachers too. Like I think they need to understand that too, right?
Right. And that you don't begin learning algebra in the ninth grade algebra class, but the algebra is a concept that's woven all the way through. And that's why, you know, when you think of graduation requirements and whomever the board is. That will be creating a policy around uh those proficiency-based graduation requirements. We need to really think about, again, a pre-K twelve lens because it doesn't just happen now. Or never, beginning in ninth, tenth and eleventh and twelfth grade. And I, I think that's kind of a concept that's another paradigm shift as well that, well, really matters once you get to high school. Know it matters really back in preschool. And that we have quality, universal access. So it's, it's a systems change that um is gonna require a systems approach. And that each piece along the way, the system has to be congruent. And although we're, you know, struggling with what reporting systems or report cards or PLP tools will be used. All that's gonna get figured out as we, you know, move on. Um, you know, as Bob pointed out, the number of students that come in from various schools to this high school. The more with me, universal in our approach, the better. This um chart was actually handed out uh and discussed for a full day with all curriculum directors. Uh special education directors and superintendents for a full day meeting to begin talking about where we are regionally. Um so that we can um move forward in a lot of ways, as much as I appreciate the states. Having each school inform their pathway. Um, that journey sometimes gets a little difficult without a good framework around it and the tools. So we've been fortunate to have teachers that are adult lifelong learners and the director of curriculum guiding with coaches and. And the principal identifying resources of places to go and the board resourcing those opportunities. So, you know, hopefully you see your direct connection as board members to the work. Um these folks are doing and it's been monumental. I appreciated your comments. Um because their work and leadership, um I mean, the concept of teacher leadership four or five years ago was a new. Relatively new concept and, and these are the folks that are really making it happen in E D H S. So. Top of their full-time jobs.
I'd like to make sure that um the board has a chance to, that there are any questions. Kathy, do you have any?
I do not.
Aaron? Um. I love Guskey. Um, I think he is a great thought leader in this area and uncovers. A great deal of our, the momentum that has been in our system since eighteen seventy-three. Um and so I'm really excited to see him, uh some of his work integrated in his thinking. Um, I, I have, well, I have, oh, as a board member have brought up the issue of, of grading. A few times and, and our grading and, and you know, the, the reality is that Cornell has no standards to look at. Uh whether we were giving S's and D's and E's and somebody else was having a seven point three grade point average. And somebody was having a four point, there is no standardization across the country. I think the, the best is about twenty-six states that agree on something, but that's probably about the best we have. Um, so it is exciting to think about something that is tied into. Um into the S back and into the Common Core and into the next gen. Uh so that we can really see what the learning is. Cause I think we've, we've placed time in.
Cause I think we've, we've placed time in seat and regurgitation and we've called that rigor. And I think that as one tries to seek to achieve the proficiencies, I think that really starts to show what kind of rigor it is, whether it's inside a classroom or in a works, in a work site or in a creek. Um, that that's the type of rigor. So I want to get a better understanding of two things is sort of to understand how the, um, the mandated proficiency-based graduation requirements does affect the grading. The, the, the proficiency-based graduation requirements are for the current seventh graders, right? Who will then graduate in twenty twenty. Um, and there is a likelihood that that will be their graduation requirements coming in and other students may have a grandfathered set of graduation requirements. But when we start to get into grading, we don't have any age-based courses. Um, we have courses that can have seniors, juniors, freshmen and sophomores in them at the same time. So talk to me a little bit about that staging of some of this grading practices, um, standards and, um, changes.
So I will just do my disclaimer of my ideas and I'll let Rob answer for real. But I guess the way I see, it's going to be, we're going to have to come up with some way of thinking about what are the graduation proficiency-based graduation requirements? And I think about the top of the triangle, I imagine an incoming freshman class that we would be, in addition to our credits that we are asking them to achieve by the end of their experience in high school, which are now all connected to the proficiencies in those courses. And the assessments are aligned to those proficiencies. Oh, and our habits are separate so that we're getting a clear picture of that academic achievement for all students. But now this incoming freshman class, you have a responsibility, um, at the top of this pyramid for your graduation requirement. So it's something in addition for this particular class. And in the course of your experience at Essex High School, we are going to ask you, example, to also demonstrate clear and effective communication to a degree at which we determine is proficient in order for you to graduate. And in fact, if you don't, you don't graduate. I mean, that would have to be the hold the line. And then between the state resources for performance assessments on clear and effective communication, any other in-house assessments that we have determined, some of our on-demand writing, for example, that could become a more, um, fine-tuned performance assessment, here are your opportunities throughout your four years. Oh yeah, and by the way, in some of these courses too, we've kind of approved performance assessments that you would demonstrate. That's what I see as a first step. And I also would see that part of the conversation is, okay, so a freshman comes in and he can demonstrate proficiency on clear and effective communication. Does that mean he can graduate? My response to that is a lot of development as a human being happens from eight, from ninth grade to twelve. And although seat time is now a variable, there is a capacity that time, experience and learning are all connected. And so I see a proficiency benchmark for that clear and effective communication, just as a, as a concrete example, that by the time you're a tenth grader, you need, here's what you should be at for proficiency if you're on track to be proficient for graduation. And there may be some wiggle room, some people might reach that benchmark by ninth, by the end of ninth grade and be working towards that eleventh, twelfth grade proficiency benchmark. So that's an example of what I could see as a first step. And maybe then the next year, we're ready to implement more of those cross-curriculars. The bulk of the work though, I think is very clear that each of those courses needs to have the proficiencies defined. And we need to make sure that our professional goals next year are connected to designing, or like even Bob said, taking the assessments we have and being very intentional about thinking about the connection to the proficiencies in our courses that we teach and that we do already. But making a systemic approach to that. Does that make sense or was that too like wordy in my response?
No, no, I, I, I think I understa-, I don't know if there's a rebuttal from our kind.
No, I, I would just add that in terms of demonstrating proficiency, it's, it's demonstrating in multiple ways proficiency of that communication transferable skill. So it's not like, uh, you know, you hit the lottery and you do it once and then you're off to Cornell or wherever, there, there's, there's certainly more to it than that. The other, the other piece I'd just comment on in terms of the grading is, is, and I know you've been a board member that has brought it up time, multiple times. And it's also been a conversation that's had over the last ten years. Um, so I think this is where the rubber's hitting the road and the grading is really getting on the table and the conversations are occurring in, in a robust fashion as they need to. And the, uh, learning habits, transferable skills being separated so that we can identify what kids can know, understand and do and then hopefully apply that knowledge in different contexts and settings to set us apart perhaps from where we've been in the past. I mean, that, that's where we want to get to and we have certainly, as Colleen has indicated, we're looking at a faculty read with a Guski book this summer. And that we're very, uh, much embracing Guski's work and, and also Marzano. So I mean, they're two of the best in the field right now, so.
Yeah, I mean, and Guski has, I, I believe at least I've read into it some really interesting opinions on how, uh, some of the gap in, um, socioeconomic and some of the free and reduced, how that shows up in the habits and can, and can be a real hole for kids to ever be able to come out of.
Keep the low.
Yeah, exactly. And we, we, I think we worry about some of the other side of it and we don't recognize what might be happening within that, um, habit grading, um-
Yeah, I agree.
Combination.
Totally agree.
I think Brian, the board, the board previously has had conversations in response to, to community members who've come forward and talked about the ninety to a hundred versus the ninety-three to a hundred. And Rob brought it back to faculty and they had just kind of started to dive into this and said, boy, when you separate these out, what is a ninety-three and what is a ninety anyway? You know, so they, they kind of had started to immerse themselves in this already. There were conversations about should we shift to a GPA grading scale of a one through four? Should it be a ninety, should be a ninety-three? And I think what they're trying to do is try to figure out if they pull that piece out and as Colleen says, I love how you hold your hands up, what's left.
I'm a Spanish teacher, I have to like, be very clear what I'm trying to say.
It was an entire class.
But you don't need to know words.
But when you, when we start looking at that academic grade, whatever that may be, then I think the faculty have to figure out, well, what number, letter, schema best represents that anyway. Um, but it was hard to kind of have that conversation outside of them kind of diving into this work.
And I, I think that's the sensitivity that the board had and, and why we've tried to, to back off. But it, it, you know, there is a, there is a class of twenty nineteen that's coming through here that, that isn't part of the, you know, the PLP and isn't part of the gra-, the, the, um, the, the proficiency-based graduation and it's their only high school experience. So as we have these phased approaches, which is I think is the only way to maintain sanity and probably a measured approach, we have to recognize that there is a snapshot in time that, that, that population of students just, they never have that second chance. The, the adults do, but that population never does. So especially as we find things that are researched and reasoned and best practice and evolving, we have to recognize that sometimes our measured approach is actually, um, is actually a barrier to providing that value to all our students. You know, that, that it's, it, so it's hard. I mean, I, I'm sympathetic to it, but I'm also, um, I also live it. And I, and I think that there's some really interesting studies about the power of the zero, the power of the habits and, and where that does, um, affect some of our students that may actually be able to perform academically, but may not be, may not be performing in accordance to the social behaviors expected, which aren't consistent, those expectations. I also, my last point is that in September and November, the board doesn't have a board meeting. Um, we took those months off last year. I'd like to not take those months off. Their intention is for them to be engagement. Uh, I don't think that we can necessarily ask people to show up at six thirty and sit in at least what is now padded seats opposed to the first several years of existence. Um, but I would like to make sure that we're thinking of how we can engage our community on topics like this, either to inform in a public information basis or even I think more ideally, if we could be seeded questions of what do we want our public to tell us? Like what did they expect? Does Essex Town, as they pass a budget and pay their taxes, are those the five things they expect? Or are there six things they expect? Um, and I think that would be important to, to hear back. So I, I hope that we, that we have those engagements and we'll look to do that during planning to, um, make sure we do.
I will just add that, um, again, just speaking to Guski. And as you'll see in that article that I put in the folder, in Kentucky, um, one of their approaches to the community, commu-, the communication with community was to actually give out two versions of the report card. So for a year, the families got, and there would have to be some decisions around which one actually counted, right? Um, but, or the way that it would be recorded in the bigger system. But to say, hey, here's the, the original report card with eight numbers for your eight courses. Here's the report card that we have, that we'd like to propose that has actually reporting out about the standards and the habits for each course. Which one do you like better? Why? And so some conversation around getting, actually, you know, it's not so scary that we're just giving these brand new thing, but compare them and talk about what is working, what's not. So I could imagine some variations of that technique, even if it's at a parent teacher conference or a survey, that's maybe a mock type of thing and not so official. But there are some approaches like that, that if people saw a model, could be really provocative.
Great. Both of you have done an amazing amount of work and I know that you're supported by faculty, but standing up and taking on this effort is really wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you for coming tonight too.
Yes.
I mean, I, I mean, be in touch if that's appropriate in any way, so.
Just know that there's some resources we included here, if you want some more information, we put some links up here.
Yep, excellent links. There's good TED Talks and Youtubes also on Guski and whatnot too.
Well, he has a great article about zeros and the math that goes into that, it's unbelievable.
Yeah. And maybe we can talk to you about that, so.
Nice job, thank you.
Nice job.
Um, great, well, we'll see if we can, um, not in the interest in rushing us, but always in the interest of trying to maintain our time marks. Uh, we'll see if we can, um, catch up some speed here. So, um, that was really informative. It's not usual that, um, you know, that we, we love to try to stack presentations. Those two were just so well hand in glove, um, I thought that was really great. I also liked the way of the style, the information ahead of time to be able to then dive more into their thinking and what they've been doing, really helpful. So I hope everyone found it to be valuable.
I want to mention too, I don't know Bob if you know that, um, David, uh- Roof, Roof?
Yeah, I know David.
From grade schools?
Yeah.
He's keynoting at one of our conferences in May.
Oh, really?
And I didn't know if, I wanted to mention it before they left, but I was-
Oh, when?
Um, May twenty-ninth at the Lake Maury, um, Inn. And they're going to be doing some proficiency-based and PLP work with, um, with him.
David's excellent, my, I've worked with him many times through the NESSD.
Right.
May twenty-ninth at Lake Maury, that's, thank you.
So to register for that is on the VSAC website.
Take care of that tomorrow.
So glad you joined our board.
How do we strike this? No, thank you for that.
Sure.
Great, so we'll go into, um, principal reports, uh, the standard, we've had the information. We'll ask each of them to, to highlight or give us any updates and, um, we can have some interchange there. But, um, in, as we go through Kathy, the, the key thing is if you see something in the org notes in the principal's report or have additional information, always feel free to just kind of do the, the send all and then that way we can generate it for the purpose, so. Um, Bob, why don't you start us off?
Okay, so I'm just gonna, um, instead of highlighting what I gave, I'm going to introduce two new things that happened since.
Great.
Uh, in the area of facilities, I wanted to let the board know that, um, I want to sing the praises of Property Services once again. Um, over April break, starting at three PM on the Friday that we broke, um, the Natural Resources students totally cleared the Natural Resources Forestry and Mechanical Learning Labs, not the, not the, um, fish lab, not the, the, um, greenhouse and, and, and not the welding lab. But what we think of as the classrooms, which has been one large common area and is your first classroom for your tech center ever, since Natural Resources was the first program that was approved in nineteen seventy, whatever, I don't remember. Um, we cleared that out and starting at three PM on that day, Property Services proceeded to, um, divide up the space into three more efficient classrooms, uh, solving a lot of problems that we've been experiencing over time. Uh, among those are lights, electrical, um, air exchange. Um, we will have cleaner floors because if you've never been in that area, the whole outside learning lab is where we do the large equipment operation. So mud, dirt, dust gets into that building. Um, it's been, it's, it's been an interesting place. Um, it's still got maybe another two weeks before it's all said and done. Students are being very patient, teachers are being very creative and Property Services is there at seven AM every morning. Um, it, it, it's going to look a lot better. And it's in the arena of take care of what we have now so that we can continue to talk about what we might need in the future. We know that space needs maybe a major overhaul, but I'm assuming that's a five to seven year project. And, and right now, the work that Property Services is doing for cheap money is, um, going to translate into a prouder, more, um, um, efficient student, I think, and definitely teacher. So if you get a chance, stop in there, we're going to do some kind of grand reopening of the building.
That'd be great.
Also, um, WCAX and Burlington Free Press carried a report on the CTE balloon launch, um, which was a project spearheaded by Jen Legori and the Computer Animation Web Design Program. Jen started teaching, uh, um, science credit in computer animation web design a few years ago. They took advantage of the National, um, Weather Balloon Launch Event, um, which was happening around the, the country. Um, our students launched a weather balloon that exceeded a hundred and seven thousand feet, um, landed in Bradford. The quickest descent rate was ten meters per second. The lowest temperature we received was minus twenty-two before all things started not working anymore. Um, if you haven't seen the video, click on, look for it on WCAX. It got so high, it was much more than a hundred and seven thousand feet, we know it. It's, that's the altimeter that it stopped calculating at. We're actually going to provide the data to, uh, advanced math class or physics class at the high school and ask them to calculate the real height that it achieved. I think you can do it based on the curve of the, of the horizon. Um, but it, it was amazing. The reason computer animation and web design did it is they fitted it with a GoPro, a GoPro cam and they're trying to achieve the cool factor data. They're going to enter a number of photos, they're asking if they can actually enter the streaming video uh, into this national competition and somewhere a body will choose what the cool factor is, um, for all of these entries of weather balloons. I think the most interesting cool factor is that they got the CTE van stuck in a muddied field and it needed to be towed out because they found the, they found the GPS coordinates and they drove, they were so excited, they drove the van right into a, a farmer's field and the farmer saw it happen and his comment was, didn't you know that was going to happen? Up, up to the wheel wells. Oh, Bradford.
Oh, Bradford, Vermont, almost in the Hamptons.
Exactly, so, um, it, it was very cool. So if you haven't seen the article or seen the video, do it.
Yeah, that's cool factor. There's, uh, on your website, the board member's website, uh, we have a thing called the CCSU Weekly and every week, uh, it's our internal mechanism to communicate with all the faculty and staff. So we always acknowledge different happenings across our system and we've included it for this week because it's so cool. It's been streaming here all week long and- all week long in the library.
We even had people call us and ask us, when you send up the next weather balloon, can we track it from our computer? I don't think we're planning on sending up regular weather balloons.
Too tough on our vans.
Front page of the Free Press.
Yes, it was very cool.
Very excellent.
So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions or follows? Rob?
So I just have a few things I'll add. In terms of our, uh, Sback assessments for the first time, uh, which were April sixth, eighth, April thirteenth and fifteenth, we, just for the board's information, we have three hundred and sixteen juniors. And the four, of those four days, each day, our attendance rate was as follows. We had a low absence rate of eight and the highest was seventeen.
That's amazing.
I think that's outstanding.
That's amazing.
From our parents, our students, uh, and our staff, because we, obviously, we had a a pitch and we had the juniors, uh, assemble so they could learn how to operate the calculator, for example, that are not necessarily intuitive. But just so impressed with their, um, ability to, as what I'm hearing about in New York State, for example, very impressed with our, our school community in in that process. Secondly, there was an organization a few years ago called Linking Learning to Life and they transformed into what was called Navigate. And in both cases, we partnered with them for three to four student experiences during the year, the main one being student internships. And this board invested a year ago because I I think it's, you know, one of those high impact experiences that can really influence and change a student's life moving forward, that we invested, based on our numbers, swelling of a person to coordinate that. I've received multiple communications this year that for a multitude of reasons, with personnel changes in the organization, they're really struggling in terms of being able to pull off what they used to do regularly with schools throughout the county. So fortunately, we have a very talented Pam Hemingway doing the good work with our career coordinating efforts and our numbers continue to swell, even though our overall numbers decline, which I think is awesome. But I just want to point out that other schools aren't so fortunate in the county, because they've been really struggling because of the breakdown, if you will, of the, of the relationship through no intentional action, just some events that have occurred. So once again, another conscious effort on your part to invest that is really paying off for our kids. So I don't want to miss that point. Um, this next point, I'll just, I'll keep you updated. There will be an official, I believe it's May thirtieth, but I'll have more information for you with the May meeting, an official uh, closing ceremony for junior ROTC that will occur. And I would encourage all board members, if possible, to attend that, uh, event. I think the, the current cadets and certainly Colonel Spalding and Sergeant Cook would very much appreciate that.
After thirty-seven years of operation, it would-
Prespectively, May thirtieth, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
Saturday at noon.
It, looking at Maple Street Park.
Barbecue.
Well, hopefully it'll be warmer by then. But, yeah, so I just wanted that that, uh, put it on your radar, but the thirtieth, I think, is what it's gonna be. But, yeah, we've, um, we've been real pleased with Sback. Our, oh, and by the way, the Career Center will occur over where the distance learning classroom uh, currently exists, starting August, August of twenty fifteen for all students. Um, and we'll have the ability to, if we, if we need to, to Skype with people as well, with career opportunities. So, it's, uh, it's outstanding and we're working, uh, we will be working with, obviously, CTE to make that a campus-wide opportunity, not just an EHS opportunity.
That's great.
So that's my update.
Thank you very much. Um, it's Teacher Appreciation Day planning, so, um, I, why don't you give us the update and then we can also-
So, so Bob and I have talked on multiple occasions and Bob, jump in if I misspeak, uh, May eighth, which is a Friday, I think. Yeah, May eighth, because the first is. Uh, we were looking at that day and in the the past few years, um, baskets have been sent and that has been really well received by staff, um, collectively. So, I, I think the next thing we need to do is communicate to you the numbers and the timing and then, once they're here, we'll get them to their, does that sound like what we've done the past, respective locations?
I think last year we did one basket for CTE and we determined for CTE it was best to have it there kind of like first thing in the morning and we incorporated some donuts and stuff last year. So it was like some breakfast goodies plus other things that they could have throughout the day for people that missed it or whatever. And then, but I I couldn't remember what time. I think we did the EHS, we did three EHS baskets, which were kind of like strategically placed in the building.
Yeah.
But I couldn't remember what time, if those went out in the morning too, or if we just-
Yeah, they did.
Did they? Okay.
They were in the morning. Yes.
So I would just ask that we break the basket for CTE down smaller?
Okay.
And we'll do three, we'll do three-
Do three, okay.
As well, three smaller ones and we'll get you the, yeah.
Yeah, and I think last year we did the three EHS baskets, were each for about seventy people.
Yeah.
Um, so do you, do you think that's still about right?
Yes.
Or do you want to just check in?
Well, no, because we we wanted to incorporate all
Yeah.
staff members and things of that nature.
Okay. So you, just give me the numbers and then I'll, and if you feel like we should do, like, four instead of three, whatever. But, um, yeah, it it sounded like the baskets were, and then, uh-
That, that, nothing but positive feedback from baskets.
Yeah, okay.
You can dip in, dip out, keep on going. And that's why I wanted to spread them out, so, because we've got teachers up on the hill in natural resources building who won't get down.
Yeah.
Perfect.
The third, we'll do the colonial room up in the hill and down underneath the library for the academic teachers, because they're engaged.
Any, like, special requests or favorite things that we should? They liked everything that we did.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, yeah.
But all disappeared?
Yeah, it, yeah, just the basket.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay, that's great. So May eighth, that's wonderful.
Thank you. And Erin, as always, thank you for your-
Oh, you're welcome.
-your attention to that.
And I'll get a card, too. I'll get, I'll do cards and I'll make sure they get around so we can all sign them, too.
Okay. Great. Um, so, um, school calendar. So this is an action item, warrant is an action item. It's the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school calendar. Uh, this is sort of the closeout and final wrap-up with the recognition of what did happen over the winter and so forth. So, um, in the org notes, it basically talks about that, um, Thursday and Friday, June eleventh and twelfth being full school days for students and Monday and Tuesday, June fifteenth and sixteen, being full professional days for teachers. Um, the recommendation will remove the early release date that had been previously scheduled for the final day of school for students, Thursday, June eleventh. So that's what we're looking to. Um, can I have a motion to accept the recommendation of administration for the school calendar of twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen?
So moved.
Second? Second, Cathy?
So that's, so they're, they'll have, they're gonna end with a full day on the thirteenth of June.
Correct.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Oh, sorry, twelve.
Thirteenth is Saturday.
Oh, sorry.
Graduation is the thirteenth.
Graduation is the thirteenth, okay.
And I think Brian, one of the questions you had was, um, the twelfth, the day before being the makeup exam day, so that would fall in line. Yes, that would, yeah.
ATSD finishes on Wednesday.
Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions, none, passes?
Thank you.
Great. Um, and I think after this topic, maybe we might be able to free up our, um-
You asked for an update on student discipline. No both involved in that for executive session.
Okay, so they're joining us until the end?
Well, I am.
I can, I can, I can provide that update or you can.
Whi- which update is that?
Uh, the student discipline follow-up. I can do it. You need to go.
I, whatever you need.
So, um, climate survey results, um, were, um, available for viewing through the org notes and, um, I guess we can, um, we have about ten minutes for this agenda item. I don't believe that there's more that we have as far as a presentation. It's, we have what we have. Um, maybe I'd ask, is there, is there gonna be a sort of a takeaway at the SU level or at the school level? Of this is what we've learned and this is what we're doing?
At the SU level, we're gonna review the, um, SU report. Um, and then, in June, when we typically have had the carousel meeting and then we break out, where principals review their action plans, we won't be doing that this year because action planning, remember, is transitioning to a fall, um, planned trajectory. So, um, some of the data may be shared near May meeting, um, with some conversation in June uh, about follow-up, but schools have been so busy with the implementation of Sback and some of the work you heard tonight that the results haven't really, there hasn't been time for an analysis of the results. So, you know, giving us a month of May to do that and then in June, maybe talk about how some of the salient points will be included in in the fall's action plans and what steps schools might want to take yours.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, contextually, I also want to put out there that, um, the state of Vermont has notified us that, beginning next year, uh, the state will be looking to administer a climate survey across the entire state. So, um, our, if we, it would be duplicative, um, but we're, we're gonna lose our longitudinal kind of data. We, this was our third year of doing this.
Third year.
Um, we'll mo- we will certainly switch over to the states because we'll be required to perform that and administer-
Are they gonna pay for it?
That hasn't been totally-
Of course.
Maybe for the first year. But, um, so that context, this very well could be the last time that we're looking at our survey, though I believe the state is looking at this same provider is one of the possibilities.
I'm not sure about that. I know that the climate survey is being piloted in a few s- schools in the state right now. So we'll try to dig out some information for you for the May meeting, just about where that, that'll be at, but really kind of expect something more in the June timeframe about what we've learned from these results.
So we'll have this as a May agenda item.
For the SU board meeting.
For the SU board meeting. So-
Because I, I'd love to request that, I mean, I, I think it really would be great to get some feedback from you on your thoughts and takeaways on this. I, I think in June.
Yeah, for the June.
We know, obviously, whenever it works best.
Yeah.
Because obviously, it's a lot to digest and stuff, but I, I would really love to hear everybody's thoughts.
Will the, um, SU, um, include a presentation? Something that we can then circulate in our org notes for the June meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then why don't we leave it that as people have a chance to revisit it, think about it, that they can forward, um, questions on to, um, Erin, myself, Judy, one or all of us, uh, so that we can make sure those are addressed through the org notes and back into the principals', um, reports and we might be able to do it that way.
Yeah.
Certainly would like to, you know, have some comment. We, we thought the spring might help us with our, uh, participation rates. Um, maybe not so much.
Yeah.
Um, so some of those takeaways would be great. So we'll plan on a June time to visit it, not extensively, because again, I think because we, we very well may be losing its value, we, we probably want to start to put our eyes forward.
I would just have three quick comments from the high school perspective. One is I really appreciated what IT did this year and that is, whenever, as a parent, as a teacher, as a student, when you accessed our, uh, website, there'd be an instant pop-up that would occur that would take you right to the survey and it would keep popping up and popping up and maybe the last two days, it got a little annoying to some people, but you could not mistake the fact that there was a survey opportunity. And we also had for our spring, uh, parent conferences, five laptops set up in the, in the gymnasium for parents to access as well. But I, you know, the numbers were still, uh, disappointing. That would be my second comment overall. But nonetheless, uh, there are some takeaways from three years of doing it and there are some trends.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess at the thirty-two items from students, school personnel and parents, uh, we trended positively in twenty-two, neutrally in ten. There were no negative trends, trends. So at least that was an initial comment. But, but IT's work was appreciated, I would say that. That was popping up all over the place.
And what we'll have, it'll be new at the SU level, is we have the SU report and what it looks like. So we've also asked, we haven't received it yet, but we've also asked for what the three-year review looks like.
Oh, nice.
So it'll provide us with those trends across the SU.
Trends, yeah.
That would be interesting to see, yeah.
That'd be good.
So that'll be some data that will be useful.
I just thought it was really interesting to see some of the differences, too, between, like, the CTE and the EHS.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, the level of respondents, um, some of the, um, the climate dimensions. It was very interesting to see, um, was it just, I mean, I thought the response rate for CTE was, like, unbelievable.
From, well, from which?
The first two categories. It was, um-
Students and the, uh, faculty?
Yeah, the parents.
Students was down, actually.
Really? I mean, but I thought it was still, I mean, that's really high.
Yeah, it was good. Uh, parents, we need to-
Yeah.
Parents.
Yeah, it was a significant difference, but-
All of our schools, yeah.
Well, they are-
But yet the EHS parents, I thought, I thought that wasn't a bad response rate. When you talk about surveys, I mean, it's not, wasn't terrible, but-
The ironic thing with the, the students is we had a, a planned effort this year with the one advisory period to have all the kids access it during advisory, so we'd have a strong number and they did and the system crashed.
So is that what?
Yeah. So we had all the kids-
I was gonna say, yeah.
We had all the kids access, accessing it that, for that half hour period. The system crashed. By the time they got it back up, the advisory period was over.
Best laid plans.
Yeah, exactly. It sounded good in theory, Brian.
Well, thank you very much. We'll come back to that in June. Um, so the next item is the CCSU board update. Um, we had a, um, we had a, a very extensive legislative update and where that was performed by, uh, hosting a number of our local legislators. Uh, there's one or two things going on in Montpelia that may have an effect on our, um, on our world. So we talked about that. There, there actually, probably since that day, there isn't a single more answer, just more questions uh, since that. Um, and we'll see where we are at the end of next month, most likely. Um, we also talked about the multi-tiered, um, system of support and got a good presentation of that, as well as where we are with it and how it's operating and some of the aspects that we look for. Um, we did talk about Sback and school action planning. I think we've said this before, but just to make sure that it's, um, said again, is with Sback coming in and where it's placed in the school year and when we get the results, we're gonna actually be returning action planning back to the fall. So it won't be a spring activity. It will go into the fall. And there's some attempt to try to coordinate the multi- multiple planning reports that need to happen between action planning and continuous improvement and others, so. We talked about the Act one fifty-three waiver. We have received and are operating on a, um, an additional one-year waiver for Act one fifty-three. This is the act that would require, we pretty much are in compliance and were on day one with about seventy-five percent of Act one fifty-three. Have moved to be in, um, compliance by about ninety-five percent with Act one fifty-three. The final part is that it requires us to move all special educators into the SU, which would introduce a collective bargaining unit, um, our, our fifth or sixth collective bargaining unit in the SU, uh, overall. Um, and it wouldn't create any greater efficiencies or effectiveness. It would just create, um, uh, more, more, more SU stuff. Um, so our hope is that, potentially, that the red can answer this as an ultimate answer. Uh, but we'll, the superintendent will keep us posted with regards to the one fifty-three waiver uh, and as we administer through this year of receiving it. Uh, we talked about the SU assessment and the methodology and, um, we have actually, uh, the board voted to approve a change to the methodology to move, um, trying to think of the best-
ADM?
Yeah, to purely to an ADM process. It used to be on square footage, it used to be on number of, of, number of computers. It used to be on a whole series of things. Um, I, you know, having been around the block of SU assessments and, um, management of them, this makes a whole lot of sense. Less complexity is, uh, simple. And we did quite a bit of policies. If you remember our last meeting, we, we were- And we did quite a bit of policies. If you remember our last meeting, we we were moving a whole number of policies that have either become um the procedures are no longer required or were redundant to law that were required. And um did the Affordable Care Act compliance policy and also did a terminations policy that cleaned that up and got the common language. Discussed the annual work plan for the CCSU that has some direct effect on um Judy and and Judy's office. Um and that is the SU board update. Next meeting is next month. Task team updates. Um leaders at work are attempting to get a meeting together. I think that's scheduled for next.
Wednesday, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth. And policy, um where we are with policy, the last meeting was a work session. We didn't have a quorum, but we introduced, the policy committee has put together uh sort of a portal for itself to work on the policies so that through Google Docs, it can now start to work on these policies sort of in an asynchronous basis, loading in comments, suggestions and working that way. Um and also by moving the policies in this in into Google Docs, we have a much richer search engine to be able to find linked policies and cross-references, so. Um I think that group is gonna uh really get its traction going into next year, especially with um the appointees uh on this board going into that work. And annual meeting, vote and review. So um we had an annual meeting and we had a vote. And I guess I'd like to open it up for um a short discussion on, I guess we can certainly have your observations, but also any suggestions of what we might be able to do particularly on the annual meeting. Erin, any any thoughts on how we might be able to get ten people next year?
I think other than offering a free prime rib buffet with an open bar, um I am actually thinking that we just don't do it anymore.
Unless we're required.
Yeah.
It is a legal requirement.
Oh, it is. Okay. All right. There's that idea.
Thanks.
Um, cause I was gonna say, maybe we could do something online. We could do like a video, a video, you know?
Yeah.
Um but I guess, I guess where I am right now is I I think it is what it is. Um or could it be something that, knowing the general number of people that are going to come, is it something that could be um incorporated into? And I guess I don't know what the requirements are as far as, does it have to be a freestanding event?
It does.
More, okay. So I get, all my ideas are gone. So I guess, you know.
I know.
We've tried changing location, um we've tried having uh student art.
Student music. Refreshments.
Um refreshments.
Can can I ask, like, the annual meeting, is it, who who is it? Is it this board? Is it all, like?
Um our board, U forty-six, uh according to our bylaws, has an annual meeting every April. Um it happens the Monday before voting.
Okay.
And um at that time, we take uh some very kind of bland articles and those get voted. We vote our clerk and we've appointed a treasurer and then we give authorization to accept uh to um issue debt or to acquire debt to tax anticipation. That's the requirement to hold it and to address those things. And then what we usually do is then adjourn the meeting and have a budget information hearing. Um so that anybody that's undecided knows before seven AM the next morning what they might wanna vote. You know, so it's not a great time to give a budget information session. Um it's sort of a last-minute kind of thing. But that's what we've been doing for quite some time. And EJ, we share the night with Essex Junction, who's also required to have their annual meeting at the same time period.
Okay.
So either we start at six-thirty and they go at seven-forty-five, or they start at six-thirty, and so it's either that way.
I mean, the only other thing that I've thought of is is there some way to combine it with some kind of a community engagement sort of thing, which I think we might have tossed around a couple of times, but um, I mean, somebody there made the comment, which I suppose is kind of true, which is, you know, we are thankfully, our budgets have been, knock on wood, fairly low drama. Um thankfully, I mean, we know what would probably prompt a large attendance. Um, you know, so like bad bad things or big cuts or
Yeah.
um unfortunately, we haven't had those reasons to pull the public out.
Yep.
Um so I I, do you think a community engagement event being combined with something like that, though, would really?
I think it's part of a larger conversation that's happening right now in Essex around governance and how much is required of our citizens to, if you really wanna be informed and vote on everything, which is more comprehensive, it's municipal budgets and school budgets and so there is some talk and we are just actually working on a grant right now to get some more funding to talk about trying to make it easier to participate and to be more civically engaged, which includes having opportunities to have the school tie, especially as it is structured in our community. So so that's a longer answer, but um so yes, I think the conversation is happening. I don't think it's worth our energy to try to get uh that room packed that night. I thought you did a really nice job, Ryan, of um rather than going over all the information that had been made available to us, if we wanted it, the whole community, to open it up to the questions for the ten people, nine people that were there, um I thought was a really good way of doing it because it it just allows the discussion to flow from what people cared about as opposed to going through it and like. Um so I think it's a good, it was really good um to to take that and to end it when it was done and not keep talking because it wasn't time for EJ to come yet. Um but I don't think it's the time. I think the way our, we're structured right now with the way we vote on our budgets on municipal, people are burnt out with with coming to these. It's not the time in the year to have to try to do that. I I like Brian's idea much better about a fall engagement, uh community engagement kind of question around around some of the issues we were talking about earlier, but our budgets pass and it's a lot to ask the community to come out, so.
I'd just say that I, as a person that's been to a few of these, I really appreciated the high order summary.
Yeah.
And I think you cut to the chase.
Yeah.
And the people that were in attendance, it was simple and what they wanted and needed to know.
Mm-hmm.
So I applaud that approach.
I do.
Well, I I appreciate that. I I think um.
But it was still informative.
Yes.
You know, it wasn't that it wasn't, it just was more.
It was personalized.
Yeah, and and I think I I think it, there's there's opportunity there to even improve that. I mean, the auditorium is a really tough place to have um any kind of intimacy or any kind of closeness. You're just just naturally battling the idea of of um position seats in a front of this of this kind of stage up, so. Um I think there's some reasons to maybe um look to tweak, but not look to make it anything that it really isn't. Um it's timing. Um if it's at seven-forty-five PM on a oh April night, that's a ridiculous time to hold an engagement opportunity.
There is.
So it's, let's let's not even like, and that's what our time is next year. We go on at seven-forty-five next year, so let's not even plan on making it bigger than we need to make it.
I agree.
Okay.
Here are the voting results if you did wanna hand.
I um I tried to um put those up, but I've forgotten them. Um they're included in our org notes.
Yeah.
So I put this together because I was just curious. Um and I think hopefully everything is the same that is on those very formal-looking documents. Um but Cindy had sent me all this stuff, so. Um I was just curious, going back to two thousand and nine, taking a look at um, one is just like, where did the voters go? Is my question, because our high of number of total voters is uh was eighteen-seventy-three, so just knocking on about nineteen hundred voters, and our low was arrived at this year of eleven-hundred-and-eighty. Um, you know, that that's seven hundred voters have have left. Um, we don't have a declining population in Essex. We have a kind of a stable, if not very slowly growing one in Essex, so that's concerning, that much disengagement.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Very much so.
What's interesting is the high on yes votes was back in two thousand and eleven with thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-three. Our low on yes votes awkwardly again came this year with seven-hundred-and-sixty-five. Um but, you know, sixty-five percent of our voters said yes this year, which is not the lowest, you know, we, it's not the highest, but it's it's up there. Um there's been a couple of years where it's been lower. So that was kind of interesting to see where we are. Um, when I took a look at this, my thing with, this is really interesting, is to see the difference. It's sort of like people warm up, so they vote for the high school budget at first, and then they warm up a little bit more and they vote for the capital, and then they they kind of roll right into the CTE. Um and when I I, my message to myself here is we are too cautious and um pinching too much our capital plant, our capital budget. I really, I would like to, just as I did this year, I would like to explore the idea of pushing up that capital budget article. Um it is an incredibly modest amount of money that we put towards a f- an enormous physical plant, and as such, we can run into deferred maintenance, and deferred maintenance is just a gotcha later on.
Yeah.
Um I think our voters have been clear. We've had as high as eighty percent um and as um and as low as fifty-six percent um have voted, and that was quite some time ago. That was that was towards, you know, the two thousand and nine, that was the the deep end of the um recession and so forth, so. Um or the the deep entry into the recession, so. I think I'd I'd like to make sure that we bring that into our budget sessions and think about where that capital budget should be. Uh and whether we should be looking to see if this creates any possibility of of um, you know, again, maybe because Carl Perkins has changed so much and money coming in for equipment has changed so much to CTE over the years, um and those other grants that used to come in and so forth, a lot of those have dried up, whether there's some things that we wanna look at and whether there's uh actually a capital or equipment or fixtures kind of budget or article that we put in there for the CTE. So.
Be interesting to see what the temperatures were and what the weather was like.
Yeah.
Seri- seriously, cause I do think that for certain, a certain segment of our voting population.
I was gonna mention that too. I think the weather was pretty bad that day.
Yep.
I think the seniors, the senior voters, I think, makes a difference, understandably.
Well, I and I was trying to remember, I know that I think it was two thousand five that the budget failed. Does that seem right, the high school budget? The other two passed?
It's either five or six.
Five or six.
Five or six.
I think it might have been six.
Cause it would have been our second year.
Yeah, okay.
I think it was our second.
Six, yeah.
Um and I think that's the last time. I don't think it's failed and didn't fail in this time period. So that was um, because I remembered and I was trying to figure out that time period, but I think these numbers are interesting to look at. I think um you know, it goes back to you, to your point, uh Liz, about there is just a general like, w- when do I vote and what am I voting for and what? And I think all that does is it suppresses our yes vote. I think I think everybody that wants to vote against the school budget knows when it's coming up for vote.
Right, I agree.
So I think that's seven hundred voters that we lost is very potentially weighted towards seven hundred yes voters and supporters. Great. I think that wraps up. We've got some um some possibilities to uh move on the annual meeting, and that's the vote review. I I am incredibly encouraged and um grateful to the voters of of U forty-six that have adopted the budget. Um it it means uh it it means so much to the ability of the administration and even of the board to be able to stay focused towards the um, towards the students and towards the learning to not have to go through the difficulty of trying to figure it out.
So part of the communication plan that we've used in the past is that someone from the board has written a note to the Essex Reporter, a note of thanks or acknowledgement, and wanted to bring that up as far as maybe somebody taking that task on and a note of appreciation in the Essex Reporter.
So I would, I would do that unless there's an a, I would gladly step aside, um if there's somebody else that wants to.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Can you, can we just confer about that?
Great. And we have, um, there's a topic that I delayed um that um I'm not, I I delayed because I'm I'm a little confounded on how to efficiently and effectively do this. Um, we do and we should uh have time to do some deeper reflection and planning and um maybe even development and training uh as a board. And we've done this before in May. We've done it in June. We've done it in August. We've done it in times where it's been part of our meetings in September, October, November. Um I don't think that there's a time sensitivity in which the school won't function unless we do X by Y kind of thing. Um and I was kicking around the idea of potentially proposing that we use the third Monday in September and we do some type of planning during the evening of that time period. It would just typically fall into some of our cycle. Um it may preclude September being an engagement month, which has some drawbacks, but also it's such a busy beginning of the year and, you know, we we may not have much to engage on at that point. So um I think I'd like to, I'd like to have people ruminate a little bit about whether September might serve a purpose for our planning. And um I wouldn't mind embedding planning and reflection and training in all of our meetings, rather than having a one-and-done kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
So I think with, if I ask you to sort of ruminate about those thoughts and we'll come back to it when we meet um in June. June's an early meeting for us because it's a carousel.
Right, and typically um in August, if we were to follow that timeframe, in August, we would send out um the board survey, so it's your self-evaluation. Uh and and I like that idea because you'll have another new board member, so two new board members coming in doesn't make sense to survey right away. Um but if you were to wait like the end of eight, August, to survey for a September planning day and then getting the um data from previous surveys from JAK to make sure we have that data.
Yep.
Um and keep that longitudinal data in areas that the board would want to identify additional training or goals.
Yep. Sound good?
Yep.
So we are at consent agenda, which is a full one this evening. Um I think I'd like to start off with first um before the motion that includes all the detail that really covers what's been in our organizational notes, is there anything on the consent agenda that someone would like to have pulled? Okay, hearing none. Um Liz, will you give us a motion for the consent agenda?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the following items. Um approve warrants, approve the meeting minutes from March ninth, twenty fifteen and March thirteenth, twenty fifteen. Um approve the recommendations for professional appointment of Heather Sawyer as math- as a mathematics teacher at EHS, Katie White as a health teacher at EHS, and Erin Cranchfeld as an English teacher at EHS. In addition to Mary Craig, a science teacher, Grace O'Neill, a science teacher, Jennifer Corey, a business education teacher. Um like to approve the letters of resignation from Liz Harrington and Stephen Hare in addition to Joshua Polly. And to approve the leave of absence for Jason Webster and Jennifer Luth. Um and to approve the door replacement bid by. Um, and to approve the door replacement bid by, that was received by the Saint Alvin's Glass.
Company Incorporated.
Company Incorporated. For the amount. Do we have the amount in there? Of, um, one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. For the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars.
And I will second that. Um, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as, um, explained in motion, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstentions? No. It passes.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, as long as it's not on the consent agenda.
So the minutes that were included in your org notes that were included in the consent agenda were approving the minutes of March ninth and the twenty-third, correct?
Correct.
So you have yet to approve the minutes of April thirteenth.
We did it in our first motion of reorganization.
So you did it there? Yes. Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
For that clarity.
I'm glad that we actually did do that.
Make sure that it's in the minutes 'cause that's a requirement.
Um, future agenda items, um, the process that we're experimenting right now is that, um, I guess about four weeks or so before our next meeting, Ben, uh, Dicky begins to distribute to Erin and I a skeleton of the organizational notes in which we can start to shape what will be happening at the next meeting. Um, this topic and having this at the board meeting, I think, is valuable. But I think what would be more valuable is for topics to come to us, questions to come to us, um, after people have a chance to kind of think and see and talk to their, to their constituents and kind of knowledge. So why don't we just, I, I, I guess I wanna stress that it's, it's a, it's an open email, um, kind of exchange of, I'm curious about this, what about this, what's happening with that kind of thing. Could be really valuable to us. Um, there's a lot that becomes standard because of times and requirements and preparation requirements and so. So, um, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this except to just say it's always open. Whenever you have a question, we can also sometimes direct them to just principal reports. And I believe that, um, brings us to our final item, which, um, will require a motion. Um, so I would like to make a motion that the U forty-six school board enter executive session for the purposes of student discipline. And, um, I'll need a second and then a vote.
I'll second that.
Great.
At nine oh seven?
Nine oh seven.
Nine oh seven?
It has to be reflected in the minutes of when we go into executive session.
And can I have a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right, Tien, thank you very much.